Okay, good evening and welcome to this Tuesday, July 20th, 2021, meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'm gonna move into roll call. Commissioner Bowie, Bowie, sorry.
Present.
Commissioner Ingerd.
Here.
Commissioner Faulkner.
Present.
Vice Chair Pfizer.
Present.
Commissioner Manser.
Here.
Secretary Peterman.
Present.
Commissioner Urquia.
Present.
Mayor Turnbo.
Present.
And Chairman Wiggins is present. So we have a full board tonight. We'll move into personal appearances, which we have none scheduled for this evening, so that will take us into our consent agenda. The only one item tonight, the approval of the minutes from the July 6, 2021, meeting. I would entertain a motion to dispose of that item, please.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mayor Turnbo, seconded by Commissioner Urquia, to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion of the motion? All those in favor? All those opposed? All those abstain? Passes 801 with an abstention from Commissioner Bowie, who was absent. Alright, no unfinished business on the docket tonight, so we will directly move into new business. We have one case this evening. That is case 21017, Cinderella rezoning and preliminary plat. This does require a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing at this time. And then, I guess we will move into the applicant. If you would please come forward and present your case to the podium, please. Make sure that the light is turned green.
Mr. Chairman, they do have a presentation that I will broadcast to your computers when the presentation is over, that I will release your computers back.
Thank you, Mr. Catterett.
And Mr. Chair, real quick.
Yes, Mr. Manser.
On a staff report here, we've got case 21016. Is it 21016 or 21017?
Thank you. I'd look at my computer, but now that I lost control over that.
21017, it appears.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the clarification and pointing that out.
Chairman, I just want to make sure we noted that the hearing, the public hearing on case number 21017, Cinderella rezoning and preliminary plat, has in fact been opened.
Yes, I opened it when I read the.
Sorry, I missed that part.
No, I'm glad you double-checked. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chairman.
Alright, good evening, members of the commission. Mayor, my name's Doug Ubben. I'm with Phelps Engineering. Here with me tonight is Tiffany Ford and Kyle Jones with Summit Homes. So between the three of us, we'll give you a presentation here and then be here to answer any questions you have. So the project itself is called Cinderella. It's a single-family subdivision, 430 lots, 135 acres. So we're here tonight to ask for the rezoning and preliminary plat approval for Cinderella. So what you see on your screen now is the site location in green. Hubock Hill Road on the north side, Brook Parkway on the west, undeveloped ground to the south and east. Alright, so.
Yeah, it went back to the agenda.
It's all good.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, we're back.
Okay, so now in front of you, you see the site plan. There's the 430 lots on the 135 acres. Kind of in the middle is the amenity center, centralized to the subdivision, and we'll come back to that here in a minute. But, so currently on this site, it is zoned R1P. There's currently an approved preliminary plat on the property, which has been in place since 2007. It includes 343 lots currently, and it was called the Estates of the Good Ranch. So what you have now before you is Cinderella, and we're requesting a rezoning to PUD from the R1P. And the reason for that is to accommodate. We've got three different product lines here, so in order to do one zoning that encompasses the three different product types. So to kind of speak to the different product types, in the, what I'm gonna call the east half, you have Product A, which is the 70-foot lots, 70-foot wide lots. There's 160 of those lots. Product B, being in the southwest corner, are the 40-foot wide lots. There's 160 of those. Product C is in the, what I'll call the northwest quadrant. There's 48, those are 48-foot wide lots, and there's 110 of those. So that's what totals up, the 430 lots. So the 430 lots on the 135 acres gives us a density of 3.2 units per acre. For comparison to what R1P, its current zoning, will allow, it allows 5.2. So being at 3.2, we're well under what the current zoning would allow, but we still are asking for the rezoning to the PUD. Just kind of where the site sits, I know traffic will be a concern that gets brought up. Sitting on the south side of Hubock Hill Road, Hubock Hill Road was recent, not recently, but in somewhat recent past reconstructed. And when it was reconstructed, it was done with this development accounted for. So when the traffic study was done for Hubock Hill Road, or the traffic improvements, it had accounted on this site being developed at four units an acre. So we're coming in at 3.2. So the surrounding road network has been designed for this development, and being under the 4.0 units per acre, the adjacent roadway will work for this development. As far as stormwater detention, kind of how you, how the site's set up, is everything drains north to south. So nothing drains to any, everything's undeveloped where it drains. It goes basically to the stream, what you see in the southeast corner of the property. There will be, on the east side, you see some detention ponds that'll provide detention. And then, when the original development was set up for the Estates of the Good Ranch, there was actually an easement for a pond on the other side of what was supposed to be Cass Parkway, but on the southwest side of the development, there's a pond over there, so that'll be used for detention as well. Kind of going back to the amenities for the site. Like I said, it's centrally located, which we think is a great design for the development. It gets right in the middle of all three products, gives the opportunity for people to come to the middle of the site, hopefully not have to drive as much, reduce the need for cars to use the parking lot, fit for all three products, so that's a great central location. It'll have a pool. You can see some playing fields on the south end. There's some sport courts and other amenities there. So I think Tiffany will get into a little bit more of that with the amenity package, but a great amenity package offered. There's three acres there, so it's a very well-sized amenity package for the subdivision. One of the last things to touch on, and just kind of the site plan, how it's set up. Up at the north end, next to Hubock Hill Road, you have a 40-foot wide landscape buffer tract. So between the landscape buffer and the extra right-of-way, we'll have, you know, 55, 60 foot from the road to any houses. So we think that's a great opportunity to put any berming we can, landscaping, to try and buffer the subdivision from the existing houses to the north. Especially, we're gonna take special consideration where the cul-de-sacs go up towards Hubock Hill Road, to make sure headlights aren't shining across the road. We can put extra evergreens, things like that, there on the landscaping to prevent that. So with that, I'm gonna turn over to Tiffany now to speak to the products and kind of what the houses and everything will look like in the subdivision.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having us here. My name's Tiffany, and I'm with Summit Homes. Just wanted to give you an overview of some of the products that we would like to build in the Cinderella community. Summit Homes really likes to have a strong sense of community with all of our subdivisions. Not just a developer, but a home builder as well, and being involved for, not just a short period of time, but involved with the community for five, sometimes 10-plus years. So with that, we wanted this community to have something special about it. And so, one of the things that we thought would be really fun and exciting for this community would have a modern desert, modern desert community feel. So all of our elevations will be slightly modified to incorporate this elevation look and feel. And we also wanted to give a lot of options for different people at different stages in their life, different income brackets. So we have three product lines that I'll go into in just a moment. And then, we also wanted to make sure to offer all three of our product lines within the first phase, and also have our amenity within the first phase, so that people know what they're building into, and that there's no surprises down the road, that they get exactly what they are being told that they're getting. So you can see, the first phase has a mix of products, A, B, and C. Second phase also has a mix of A, B, and C, and third phase completes out products A and B. This will be almost built from the center out to get the most connectivity between the entire community. Our Product A, which is on the east side of the property, will have floor plan options that are ranch, reverse, story and a half, story and a half, and two-story homes. The square footage for the homes in this portion of the community will be anywhere from 1,600 to 2,600 square feet. And then, all of these plans will have the option to finish a basement, which will add an additional 6 to 1,000 square feet to the total home square footage. As far as pricing for this product, we can't speak to what the market will do in a year, two years, three years from now, but we can speak to what these homes will be selling for in today's market. So today, we would expect these homes to be in the range of 400,000 to 700,000. The next product line, we're calling Product B, which is in the southwest corner. This is, offers the same floor plan options of your ranch, one-and-a-half-story, two-story, reverse, and one-and-a-half-story. And these plans will range anywhere from 1,250 to 1,850 square feet. And these will also have basements that can be optionally finished, that would add an additional 350 to 800 square feet to the home. The current price range for these homes are 300,000 to 450,000. And once again, these pictures that we're showing are sample renderings of what we expect to transform over the next couple of years of, you know, this modern desert feel, but these are just a representation. And the last product line, Product C, which is in the northwest corner, will be a maintenance-provided section. This will also have the same floor plan options of two-story ranch, story and a half, and reverse story and a half. These homes will range in size from 1,400 square feet to 2,250, and also have the option to finish basement area from 700 to 1,400 square feet. And these are also in the same price range today's market of 300,000 to 450,000. As I mentioned before, we value the community feel within our communities. So it's very important to us to not just, you know, put in a pool and call it done, but we want to make sure that this is something that people are proud to come to, and has everything that you would want to have in a community within walking distance. So this amenity complex we propose will have a clubhouse, a swimming pool, playground, sports courts, playing fields, and walking trails. You'll see that the walking trails do go around the entire site, so that people have the ability to walk around the site, and there are lots of other walking trails throughout the community for connectivity, almost some type of trail or sidewalk around the entire complex. These are some sample renderings of what we propose our clubhouse to look like. So this would be our entry elevation, and to the right, you can see the glass railing that would look down to the poolside of the amenity complex. So this would be our poolside elevation with, would be a walkout, some type of party room or event space that could be used by the homeowners within the additional innovative design features that will be upstairs that are still to be determined. A sampling of the back elevation, and the side elevation. These are a couple more pictures of what we anticipate that this amenity complex look like, with the sports courts, the pool, and the hammock garden. With that said, we are happy to answer any questions you have after staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do any members of the commission have an immediate question for the applicant? Otherwise, we will move into our staff report. Alright, very good. Jim, staff report, please, sir.
Thank you, sir. Do you all have your computer access back?
We do, thank you.
Thank you. The applicant provided a lot of information about the application. There's some additional information staff would like to bring forth this evening. A couple items we need to get on the record, of course. The specific request, as was identified, is to reclassify the zoning of this 135-acre tract from its current R1P, which is our single-family planned district to the PUD, which is our planned unit development district. We look at surrounding zoning. Directly to the north is the Dutchman Acres subdivision, which is in unincorporated Cass County area. To the northwest would be the proposed Saddle Brook subdivision, currently zoned R1P. Directly to the west, across Brook Parkway, is the prairie of the Good Ranch subdivision, which is zoned R1P. Then to the south is the, an agricultural area, part of the Good Ranch property. To the east is unincorporated Cass County area as well. Our future land use map and our growth management plan does designate appropriate land use for the property as low-density residential, identified as up to four units per acre. And the major street plan in our transportation plan classifies Hubock Hill Road as a minor arterial and Brook Parkway as a minor collector. A reclassification of zoning does require a public hearing that was advertised for this evening. Went to enter to the record the notices that were sent to the adjoining property owners, the notice of publication in the journal, our Unified Development Code, the application that was submitted, our growth management plan, and the staff report. The request to go to the planned unit development district was intentional in that, when you have a mixture of single-family, lot sizes, and product types, the PUD is designed for that type of residential community. It allows flexibility in lot width, lot size, setbacks, lot coverage areas, which Cinderella is proposing under the PUD. I do note also that with the planned unit development zoning, they have to submit a preliminary development plan, which is in essence a preliminary plat, and they have done that this evening. Identify, there's two specific sections of the city code dealing with planned unit developments, the 415060, and then the 470050 section of the city code. That guides the applicant and the project through the entire review process. Couple of previous actions. Order near the property, as the applicant indicated, this property is currently known as the Estates of the Good Ranch. It was rezoned to the current R1P zoning back in 2006. 2007, they established the Estates preliminary plat, and that preliminary plat does remain valid today. That preliminary plat did have two distinct areas in it, similar to the three that are proposed this evening. On the west side of the subdivision was what they called their villas. At the time, these were identified as narrow, smaller lots. They were approved at 55-foot wide and 6,600 square foot. The east side, or east half of the development, was the standard R1 lots. Also, shortly after the preliminary plat was approved, the property was included in the Hubock Hill and North Cass Parkway Community Improvement District. This was a funding mechanism that was set up by the city and the property owner to help improve Hubock Hill Road. Prior to the CID being approved, there was no connection east or west of the Dutchman Acres subdivision. The subdivision, the CID allowed the creation of Hubock Hill Road to connect to Dean Avenue, and then also ultimately the interchange. One final action, or application that's currently under review, that's in the vicinity, is the Saddle Brook subdivision. So the commission's gonna be very familiar. Back on June 15th, the commission, you had your public hearing on the Saddle Brook subdivision, and that rezoning application, again, that's the 65 acres directly to the northwest of the subdivision, on the north side of Hubock Hill Road. It was at that meeting, staff did recommend approval of the rezoning request. After the public hearing, the planning commission did vote 6 to 3 to recommend denial of that request to the city council. At the city council hearing held on July 12th, the council did not accept the planning commission recommendation. They did accept the staff recommendation, and they voted 7 to 1 on first reading of the rezoning application to modify the development standards applicable to the Saddle Brook subdivision. They also had the public hearing on the preliminary plat, but just as the commission was asked to vote on the preliminary plat after the zoning hearing, we requested council to defer final action on the preliminary plat, because the zoning has to be in place in order for that preliminary plat to be valid. So if council does not approve the rezoning on second reading, then the preliminary plat is moot. If they approve the rezoning on second reading, scheduled for July 26th, then they will consider a vote on the preliminary plat. Couple of comments on that, because they did not accept planning commission recommendation. The comments made by the council that I interpreted was that the rezoning was consistent with the land use plan. They felt it met our growth management plan. They felt the, it was also consistent with the city neighborhoods, both to the north, being Brookside, and to the west, being the Stonegate subdivision. And they showed their support for a variety of lot sizes. I think they felt they were being consistent with decisions they had made on the Eastbrook and Creekmore subdivision and the Parkside subdivision. On this application, the Good Neighbor Meeting for both the zoning and the preliminary plan was held back on June 16th. There were 18 individuals at that Good Neighbor Meeting. Most of those attending were residents of the Dutchman Acres subdivision. The questions that were asked by those attending and the responses from the applicant are provided in the staff report. Going through staff comments, again, as the applicant indicated, the request to reclassify, it allows the land area to be divided into very distinctive geographic areas. There are three product areas, again differentiated by lot sizes and home sizes. And again, the PUD is specifically set up to allow that flexibility in design. I mentioned the two sections of city code specific to planned unit development districts. Staff has determined that those sections have been complied with. The property itself, the 135 acres, has been part of the Good Ranch master plant community, which was approved back in 1994. And again, I mentioned the land use plan map designated the property for up to four units per acre. Again, the request for the zoning does require the preliminary plan, which establishes the different pods of the subdivision, as the applicant went through. Of note here is that any future modifications to the preliminary plan would require that to come back before the planning commission and city council. So they would not be able to deviate what product goes where. They would have to follow the substance of this preliminary plan. They're allowed very minor modifications, but would not be able to switch out a product type or change lot sizes from what the preliminary plan shows you this evening. I did identify the staff report in a table that shows the following, the different subdivisions that have been approved, either for the R1P district or the PUD, that allows single-family homes on smaller lots, either with reduced lot widths or reduced side yard setbacks. You'll see Cinderella's proposal in there, the minimum lot size, 4,800 square foot, minimum lot with 40 foot, and then the minimum side yard setback of five. We have other subdivisions that have smaller minimum lot sizes or a similar minimum lot width, and then we have many subdivisions, slightly larger lot size, some newer, some older, all identified here, as well as the density of the subdivision. This one proposed at 3.17 units an acre. Again, we've had subdivisions with higher density and lower density. The, this planned unit development, the only land use that is approved or permitted use are single-family detached homes. They would not be able to alter that. Again, I also identify what the current development standards are under the zoning, and then what is proposed. There is a reduction in lot size and lot width being asked, as well as side yard setback. They have identified the three distinct geographic areas. We've mentioned the minimum lot size of 4,800 square foot. They also have that Product A, which is the entire east half of the property. Minimum lot size is 9,100 square foot with a 70-foot lot width. So I wanted to identify what those different standards are for the three product types. The property is within Water District number 10, so they will be supplying the potable water to the property, and I know they're in discussions with the Water District. There is a 12-inch main that does cross in front of the property along Hubock Hill Road. This request and a preliminary plan was submitted to the School District, as all of our preliminary plans are, and their standard comments are. They've been aware of the Estates development. They're aware of what Cinderella is asking, and they limit their comments to that. We also had the preliminary plan submitted to the South Metropolitan Fire Protection District. They had some initial comments. Their biggest concern is with all developments is having more than one access point, and because they're doing those three different product types in the first phase, they will have two access points to a public roadway. The subdivision adjacency requirements of our code have been met. Again, the only side of the property where this is applicable is on the west, where the prairie of the Good Ranch is. The adjacency standards do not apply to properties outside the city limits. I mentioned the conceptual plan for Cinderella that was presented at the Good Neighbor Meeting showed a total of 428 lots. And again, the minimum lot width, 40 foot, and they had the three different housing product types. The conceptual plan has, was modified prior to submitting what you're looking at this evening. They did incorporate, where they could, the teardrop cul-de-sac design. There were two areas where they worked with the Public Works Director to maintain the standard cul-de-sac design, but all the other cul-de-sacs do show teardrops, so that forced a little bit of realignment of some lots. They did add a connecting street, and the reconfiguration did allow the lot count to be 430, which is submitted as a preliminary plan this evening. The applicant identified Hubock Hill Road, which was improved back in 2010 to minor arterial standards. And again, this development being in the Community Improvement District, there will be a property. be a property tax assessment on all new homes in this development, as well as the prairie subdivision to the west, that will help to reimburse the costs that were paid for to improve Huback Hill Road. Huback Hill Road, when it was designed, did utilize the land use plan designations to determine the trip generation that needed to be addressed. When we look at this property, they used four units per acre, and again, this proposal's coming in at 3.17 units per acre. So, the traffic study did take into account a development even denser than what's being proposed here. That traffic study also looked at full buildout of the commercial areas of the Good Ranch, the industrial area of the Good Ranch, as well as the areas that are feeding into this roadway from the east. So, the road is designed to handle the development of this parcel as proposed. The Good Ranch does have a master development agreement, was approved back in 2014, established the requirements for stream buffer protection and stormwater management, and the proposed preliminary plan does comply with the terms of that agreement. I also identified the Good Ranch Memorandum of Understanding, which was approved back in 1994, does address the parkland dedication requirements. There is no public parkland within this subdivision itself. Public parkland was identified in the MOU for different tracks. One track is directly to the south of this proposed development, which is a proposed 137-acre public park. That land is not dedicated yet, but the city's in the process of working to get that land Overall, with this development, the stream buffer that is proposed down in the southeast quarter, 27% of the entire site is provided as common open space. That, of course, does also include the landscape buffers along Huback Hill Road and Brook Parkway. The applicant identified all the amenities that were proposed for the subdivision. Did include in your packet as well, a draft of the Memorandum of Understanding. It has not been executed yet, it's still in draft form. This MOU does outline all the requirements and responsibilities of both the city and the developer, and it outlines the timing for construction of all the public improvements. So, if the rezoning and preliminary plan are approved, they come in with a final plat, then that MOU basically is converted to a specific development agreement for each phase of the subdivision. Mr. Krass, the Engineering Division did submit memorandum on the provision of adequate public facilities to the development. Staff has submitted proposed findings of fact for this PUD request. Then, in closing, on the recommendation from the staff, just wanted to identify how staff formulates this recommendation. I think that's important. It doesn't get stated often, but when we look at an application such as Sander, first thing we look at is the land use plan. What does our land use plan show for the development, which shows low-density residential? We always seek direction from the city council, basically meaning we look at the strategic plan. Are we meeting goals identified within the strategic plan? What have been previous land use decisions that the council has made? We look at what is the highest and best use of the land, and what's best for the residents of the city of Raymore. We do listen to the residents, and the applicants do listen to the residents of the city in their proposals. So, based upon all that, city staff on this application does recommend the Planning and Zoning Commission accept the staff-proposed findings of fact, forward this case 21017, the rezoning of the existing R1P to planned unit development on this 135-acre tract known as Sander, forwarded to the city council with a recommendation of approval. Again, the memorandum is submitted from the Engineering Division for your consideration, as well as the draft copy of the MOU for your review. That, Mr. Chairman, would conclude staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Kateret. This time, I would ask if any members of the commission have any questions for city staff based on their presentation?
I got a good question.
Yes, Commissioner.
This may be for the developer, but were lots, did this go from one amount of lots to another amount of lots, from 300 something to 400 something? I think I read that somewhere.
The current preliminary plat for the subdivision had 343 lots within it. That's the Estates of the Good Ranch, which is still a valid preliminary plat. The applicant's proposal this evening for the subdivision was...
430?
430, thank you.
Any other questions of staff at this moment? Okay. As noted earlier, the public hearing is open. The way we are going to continue doing our public hearing procedures that we implemented at our previous meeting is that we would ask any members of the public, to start with city of Raymore residents, to come to the podium. You can have five minutes to please make whatever comments you desire. If you happen to have a comment that is similar or identical to something that somebody else's had, could you just state that fact as opposed to just basically saying the same thing over again? And we do ask that when you come forward, you please provide your name and address for the record. And, yeah, any Raymore residents, please come forward, and everybody will get a chance
My name is Linda Benson. I live at 1043 South Sunset Lane, Raymore, Missouri, on the corner of Sunset and Huback Hill. I'm just outside the 180-foot where I'm notified of what's going on, but my neighbors always let me know. I've been in real estate for 46 years. I sold, I was the listing agent of all the lots in Dutchman Acres, and I just want you guys to know that on the north side of Huback Hill are three-acre tracks. I just closed a house not too long ago, $350,000, right across the street on three acres. I asked at the Good Neighborhood Meeting if they could enlarge the lots right along Huback as a buffer coming in off the acreages. That's what they used to do in Raymore. They didn't seem to want to do that. Do we still have the 40-foot lot, the 60-40-foot lots, Jim? Are those still in that plat? The 60-40-foot wide lots?
No worries. Yes, there are still 40-foot. That is the minimum.
Well, I want you guys to imagine, my home is a story and a half raised ranch, which means the garages come in behind. I have 1,600 and approximately 20 square foot on the main level. I have a total of 2,370 square foot. I was the first home in Dutchman Acres. I built in 1974. My house is 52-foot long. Now, we're going to have lots that are 40-foot wide. So, you've got to kind of envision that with your home, think about the size of your home, and we're going to have lots that are littler than our houses on width. I'm glad this is single-family. I'm glad it's not multifamily. And I'm not opposed to it developing into single-family. My only two concerns, I am concerned about Huback Hill Road because it has a huge amount of traffic now, and it's split between city and county as far as maintenance, so it's already breaking up right beside my house, just with the traffic that goes through there. So, I'm concerned about the upkeep of Huback Hill. I wish there was a little more buffer of the little bigger lots along Huback Hill across from the acreages. If they do not increase that, I hope you guys will absolutely make them put buffers of trees and things to help shield that a little bit. And I'm kind of concerned about a 40-foot wide lot that's littler than my house. So, that's my concerns. Thank you.
My name is David Otis, and I represent the Good Ranch, Good Otis, and we have the development, which is Prairie View immediately to the west. We intend, which is under development now, we've got the infrastructure in, and houses are starting to be built. The lots are actually considerably larger, but along the east side of our development on Brook Parkway, we intend to have some pretty heavy landscape buffer there on Brook Parkway. And I know that they talked about the landscape buffer along Huback Hill. I'd also like to see that that is done. I mean, we're going to take care of our side, and we'd like it to be similar on the, which would be the west side of Sander. That's my comment, basically. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. If there are no other Raymore residents, I will open the podium to anybody that wishes to speak on this issue.
Other way around.
I'm sorry?
I believe you called for a Raymore resident.
I did previously, yes. I said anybody else said now.
Yeah, and simply note for the record, I believe Ms. Benson's in Dutchman Acres, which would have been outside jurisdictional boundaries of Raymore.
Okay, thank you, sir. So, yes, anybody else, please, the podium is open.
Hi, my name is Kathy Graves, and my husband and I just moved to Raymore in September from Colorado. We are building the very first house in Prairie View. When we met with a builder originally and had a plan for our house, it's a reverse story and a half with a three-car garage. The lot, there were several lots there that were not big enough at 68-foot to build our house. The developer redrew the lots so that we would have an 80-foot lot to accommodate our home. The 40-foot lots are a real concern in Sander. The looks of them, the clover and hive look, where they're just little cracklebuck houses. And it's very hard to imagine someone who has the larger house, up to the $700,000 price range, would be happy in the subdivision to look across the street, a couple blocks down, and see houses that are on a 40-foot wide lot. I agree that there should be bigger lots off of Huback Hill for view, you know, for aesthetics, but as someone who's going into Prairie View, I'm not pleased that all the lots on the side where I will see them will be the little 40-foot wide lots. And I agree with Mr. Otis that there needs to be some very good landscaping along Brooks Park, Perks Drive. Thank you.
If there are no more, I will close the public hearing, so last chance here, if anybody would like to come up. Very good, the public hearing is closed at this time. So, now we will move into an opportunity, if the applicant would like to address any of the concerns, or if the city staff have any comments to add to any of those concerns, please come forward at this time.
To address, I guess, the two concerns, there are two of the concerns. Along the west side, along Brook Parkway, we are comfortable putting in a landscape buffer. There is a 30-foot wide landscape tract over there, so that will allow for additional landscaping. We agree to put that in. As far as the larger lots along Huback Hill, we did consider that from the last meeting we had with the neighbors. Kind of as you look at this product line you have here, all three products are what I'll call accessible or viewable from the public streets. That's why it works good having the large lots all on the east side. You can see those from Huback Hill. The other two, you can either see from Huback Hill or Brook Parkway. So, if you were to put all of the large lots up along Huback, it would stick one product in the southeast corner with no visibility, and for marketability for the developer, they really need to have those lots all visible. So, for that reason, we'd like to keep the lot configuration the way it is, and feel it's adequate with the screening we have on Huback Hill for that reason.
Mr. Chair, I had a question of the applicant.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, please go ahead.
So, looking at the drawing of the layout, why did you put a cul-de-sac in at the end between lots 38 and 39 instead of stubbing that for potential roadway extension along there and access? It's a further south teardrop cul-de-sac. Because that, I mean, you're connecting your west side to that roadway that runs on the south side of Prairie View. I was just kind of curious why you didn't, if you're not going to extend the, if you're not going to put a road in there, I understand that, but why didn't you stub that for the opportunity to, for roadway extension?
Just with no current, as far as I understand...
From the previously planned Cass Parkway? Yeah. Good. You got an answer for that one?
Sorry, go ahead, Ms. Krass.
The reason for that is that if that roadway, if the roadway there on the south side is to be extended, that will be a limited access roadway. So, Brook Parkway would be the access point. There would be no other access points until you got to, until you got to School Road.
Right. Which is why that cul-de-sac... Access to the west. I mean, if you stubbed it now for potential connection...
No, what I'm saying is, by our access standards, that cul-de-sac would not be allowed to access to that, access that road to the south. The access point is at Brook Parkway, which is where it's connected now, then that road would continue easterly to School Road, which would be the next access point. It would be a limited access roadway. It would be a major arterial.
But it's another access point that you're limiting for people to live on the south side of the development.
But the nature of that roadway is access, if I'm understanding you correctly, sir, you're asking about the cul-de-sac that extends straight south.
Right.
Okay, that would not be, that access point would not be allowed by our access standards. The type of roadway that North Cass Parkway is, you have access points at half-mile spacing.
Oh, okay, I got you now. I got you.
Okay. Commission, other commissioners, I see some notes on some papers, so other commissioners have comments or questions?
Sure.
I'll go immediately to Commissioner Faulkner based on the lots of writing I see, sir. Plus, I know you always have good questions, so...
Thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I'd like to talk about the rare instances when planning and zoning commissioners don't agree with staff-reposed findings of fact, as happened at our previous meeting. City staff, which is made up of paid professionals, does the majority of the legwork, meets with applicants, researches the cases, and puts together detailed packets for the commission. The Planning and Zoning Commission, which consists of eight commissioners appointed by the mayor, and typically includes the mayor and/or a city council member, the commission is made up of Raymore residents and focuses on planning and zoning matters. Finally, there's the city council made up of eight elected council members who have legal authority and final say on most planning and zoning matters, as well as many other diverse aspects of running the city. Each of these three city entities typically involved in planning and zoning matters, that's staff, the commission, and city council, have different points of view. I propose, when staff and commission don't agree, that city council should prioritize the commission's viewpoint, since we are the residents of Raymore. I'll also note that it is fairly difficult for the commission to disagree with staff's recommendation, since by the time the commission sees a case, staff has typically been working with the applicant for some time.
I'm sorry, does this pertain directly to the case at hand that we're discussing?
Yes, it will. This is lead-in, thank you. The applicant has spent significant money on engineering plans and such. This puts the commission at a disadvantage when... This puts the commission at a disadvantage when we don't agree with some aspect of a case. Now, I'd like to talk for a moment about zoning. One of the main reasons we have zoning is to promote compatibility of new development with adjacent properties. This protects quality of life in existing neighborhoods, safety, property values, et cetera. I don't feel that these proposed new developments, Sanderah and Saddlebrook, are compatible with the existing development. Several of the reductions in requirements, particularly in lot size, lot width, and side setbacks, take these minimum requirements down to just over half of a standard R1 lot. I don't see how this benefits existing residents of Raymore. I also believe that there will be problems with parking, traffic, and long-term property values in these developments. Looking at the chart on page 12 of the staff report, and that's at the bottom of page 12, I think a big reason that Morning View works is that it is age-restricted, also maintenance provided. I don't really have an issue with most of the subdivisions on this list, just Eastbrook at Creekmore, Saddlebrook, and Sanderah. I voted against Saddlebrook and I'll vote against Sanderah for the reasons I've already mentioned. Since it seems that Eastbrook at Creekmore may have set a bad precedent that is being used to justify reductions in requirements for Sanderah and Saddlebrook, I was curious how Eastbrook got through the Planning and Zoning Commission without opposition. So I looked back at the packets and minutes from that case. I think it's interesting. The first final plat...
Mr. Chair, could I, I'd like to object. I think Commissioner Faulkner is moving into an area where motion and second to be made with further discussion might be a more appropriate statement opportunity for Mr. Faulkner to express his displeasure with those developments rather than us in the investigatory section of this trying to determine whether or not to rezone this particular piece of property.
Mr. Mayor, since I had the floor...
That's why I objected, you're out of order.
I, how much more do you have, sir?
About half, and frankly, may I say that what I am saying, I think, directly influences the commission in how the motion is made. And consequently, I'd like to finish before we necessarily insist on a motion. Mr. Sir?
My concern, and I assume it's probably similar to Mr. Sir's, is that, you know, we're discussing the rezoning of this particular piece. So I think that, my issue is that time now should be used for asking questions of city staff or the applicant, and then at points of discussion or in a point of emotion, we could give more of a presentation. But, Mr. Sir...
And, Mr. Chair, my issue is that after watching the city council meeting on Saddlebrook and seeing that apparently I failed to get my point across in that case in Planning and Zoning Commission, I'm attempting to make a better argument against Sanderah, and that argument is based on what I am saying.
I don't believe at this time there is a motion for the commission to consider. There's not been a second for a motion to consider.
Right.
The staff report has been provided, the public hearing has been provided, opportunity for questions to be asked by the commission to members of the staff as well as to the applicant. If that's not, I would say that the most appropriate action at this particular point would be to get an action or a motion and a second on the floor for the commission to consider, and then have an opportunity for commission member comment on their analysis of the case at hand that's been presented to them.
Yeah.
I understand the tie-in here, but again, we are here on a very specific application and not necessarily for establishment of policy amongst the city for approval or disapproval of particular applications that come before it. Your focus this evening is on this particular application.
So I will ask that we just put a pause for just a second. Based on the procedures that we have written down, this is the opportunity for the commission members to ask questions of the city staff or the applicant. So if you have a question, I would love to hear it. I still want to hear some of the final opinions, because I agree with some of the things you are saying. So I would like, if you have a question of staff or the applicant, I would ask that you please ask it at this time and then we will continue, or maybe give you an opportunity to summarize or prepare to summary at the end here. But based on procedures, this is a, this is a time for city staff or applicant questions.
Frankly, Mr. Chair, I don't like breaking my comments and picking up where I left off later, but...
I understand.
These are not, these are not generally questions, these are comments specifically about the case.
Which I think there's an appropriate, and there will be an appropriate time for that during the discussion if there is a motion. But I would like to get into questions of staff or applicant. So if you do have any, I would allow you to continue to have the floor for questions of the staff or applicant at this time.
These are comments on the case. I will bring them up after there's a motion on the floor.
Perfect, thank you, sir. Other commissioners have questions of city staff or the applicant at this time? I had one real quick. Jim, you mentioned, you touched on the cul-de-sacs on the eastern half of the property that, you know, that we worked with the applicant. What was the rationale or the thought behind that when our standards are to move forward with all new developments in the teardrop? So, Mr. Crass, I'm just curious why we allowed some to be and some not to be? Is there a great reason or is it just kind of a, oh, we would, they'd lose a couple of feet of a lot to do it the other way?
Actually, there were, this is another one of those kind of in-between plats, as we've stated, there is an existing preliminary plat. And as such, the access points to Hubock Hill Road were established, and as we've talked, they're also set by access standards. So if you look at the two access points which are fixed on Hubock Hill Road, the teardrop cul-de-sacs are considerably wider than the existing cul-de-sacs, and so it significantly impacted the lots on those two cul-de-sacs at the end to be able to accommodate, to accommodate the lots. And as we've been transitioning throughout this process, when we have the existing subdivisions, we've been working with them so they don't lose their lot count. We can still, we can still meet our objectives of providing some water quality, providing some areas for stacking snow removal, and that's really the first objectives we want to look at, and still maintain some integrity of the preliminary plat.
Okay, so that was kind of, because we did that with the Prairie View, correct? We allowed, some of them were teardropped and some of them were more...
Yeah, and we've also done that in Creekmore as well.
Okay. And so that was kind of my question, was some of this, or I guess it wasn't my question, otherwise I would have asked it, if that was based on a previous preliminary plat and so therefore it was kind of grandfathered, if you will, for lack of a better term?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then just for clarification for staff, you know, when we talk about lot width, that's, is that essentially an average of the total lot width? Because some of these lots are like, there's some like 28-foot lots on here on the map. When we say 40, is that, is that the width, minimum width of the lot at the point of the setback? Is that an average of, so if one's 30 feet at the front and 50 feet in the back, that becomes a 40-foot average? Or what's, how do we gauge? Because there are multiple sub-40-foot lots in this plat.
The 40-foot lot width is actually measured at the front building setback line. So at that point, when you get to cul-de-sac lots...
Right.
It'll be narrower at the street frontage, but we measure lot width at that 25-foot front yard setback.
Okay. That's what I figured it was, I just wanted to ask and then also just that way it was out in the public world as well. Other commissioners have any questions for the applicant or staff at this time?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I have a quick question. You've got three entrances to the subdivision. Are there going to be three identifying landmarks that you're entering the subdivision on each of the entrances to the subdivision?
Yes, Summit Homes would plan to put entrance...
Get a little closer to it or lift it up.
Sorry. We would plan to put monuments at each of the three entrances to identify the subdivision.
So while you're there, can I ask another question?
Yes, Commissioner.
Can you address the issue? Because after reading through the entire package, I had similar concerns about density. That, I just wrote that word in like three or four different places throughout my package. So can you address that while you're here at the podium about the density of this being so packed?
That might be a better question for the engineer, or he might be able to add on.
Sure.
We're just, from Summit Home's standpoint, trying to provide options to people and at a price that is affordable or attainable for the working class. And so this is one way that we have found to accomplish that, but the density, I believe, is still within the zoning that was previously approved, but feel free to add.
As far as density goes, a density of 3.2 would be very common with a single-family neighborhood. So as a project at 3.2 goes, it's, like I said, very in line with what you'd see for single-family development. Now, as far as some of the lot sizes, I guess Tiffany might come back and speak to some of the similar products you've got around town where you're doing this and people, you know, the success, the success you're having with those.
So this is a concept that we are utilizing in other municipalities. We were just approved in Lee Summit for a community called Bailey Farms, and it has this product mix, but it also incorporates twin homes. So we did not include that in this community. In Blue Springs, we have a community that has only the products C and B included. We, you know, we've talked about the Creekside product that is being built, and then there's also an Overland Park. There is a portion of a community that has Villa products, has the product B, and also has a product that's larger than this product A that's shown here. So mixing the product and giving pods within those communities allows for connectivity and a master-planned community versus a lot of small communities.
So I understand, that makes, makes good sense to me, because when you're looking across, and I know we're here in Raymore, but when you look across the landscape of what's happening and kind of trending now in terms of building throughout the country, these small lots seem to be a little more popular nowadays as opposed to the larger lots that I think that we're accustomed to out here. So I just wanted you to speak to that a little bit so we can get a, so I can get a feel for what you guys' thought process was.
We want to be able to provide a new home option for people that don't have $500,000 to spend. That right now, if someone's, you know, a first-time home buyer, they're forced to buy an existing home and maybe have to know how to, you know, turn that house around or flip that house. This gives people an option that is not multifamily, it's not a twin product, it's not apartments, but they can still have their single-family home that they own and it's in their price range.
Thank you.
Mr. Sir, I saw the finger, your little symbol.
Yeah, just real quickly, want to make sure and point out, and I think Mr. Catterett did this during the course of the discussion, as part of the analysis for the Planning and Zoning Commission, I want to make sure that you continue to stay focused. There are, as far as I can tell, 10 separate items and factors to determine under 470.020G1 for consideration this evening for the rezoning and preliminary plat, understanding, of course, that you have the PUD designation in here that is allowing for those variations in lot sizes and width. But I, again, wanting to make sure the commission understands the breadth and the scope of what your review and consideration is this evening.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner, moving.
With that said, what's in the memo of understanding is, what's in the memo is "set," right? I know it's a draft, but that's "set," what's in the memo?
When you say "memo," the memorandum of understanding?
It is "set," right?
In essence, it's not executed yet, so there may be slight modifications to it, but in general, that is what the staff has presented to the applicant for their review and signature before it goes to council.
Okay, thank you.
That would be critical terms, is that right, Jim? Critical terms will not be altered.
That is correct, yes.
Any other commissioners have any questions? Yes, please, Vice Chair Pfizer.
I have a question for the applicant about the lot sizes. I'm curious, do you ever consider mixing them up, like not having all of the large ones together and all of the small ones together, just so there's a more balanced feel to the whole neighborhood?
That is something that we are considering for future products. We're just trying to work with some different land designers to see how those options lay out for the future.
Okay, because I just see the condensed area, it almost feels like, here's your nice area and here's your poor side, which is not at all a poor side because it's very expensive still. So it just, just a balance would be nice.
Right, we would like to move towards that if we can find a way to do that with our phasing and our entrances.
Thanks.
Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Urquia.
Kind of piggybacking on the last three comments, if you do take that west side, which is the more condensed area, if you weren't doing product A on the east side, what then would be your homes per acre in that scenario?
I don't know, we'd have to run the math on that, I couldn't sit up here and tell you what the difference is going to be. I mean, yeah, I just had to come up with a layout, I couldn't give you a number offhand here.
Yeah, I was just kind of curious, because I know we talked about averages and different things like that, so I was like, well, you do have it, you know, when you have the bigger lot sizes on the east side, it's going to drop that, you know, the number of houses per acre, whereas if you didn't have that, I was just kind of, kind of curious.
If it was just B, then we would be probably well north of the four home square.
Right, that's kind of what I was curious of.
Maybe in the seven or eight.
Okay.
Okay. Any other final commission members have any questions, the city staff or applicant? And remember, this is both the rezoning and the preliminary plat hearing to discuss If not, I would entertain a motion to dispose of this case.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I'd like to make a motion that the Planning and Zoning Commission accept the proposed findings of fact and forward case number 21017, rezoning the existing R1P, Single Family Residential Plan District to PUD, Planned Unit Development District, for the approximately 135-acre property to be known as the Sanderah subdivision to the city council with the recommendation of approval.
We have a motion from the mayor, do I have anybody to second the motion?
I'll second.
So I have a motion by Mayor Turnbull, a second by Commissioner Urquia, to accept and forward case 21017, R1P to PUD, the rezoning of 135 acres for the Sanderah Project Council with the recommendation of approval. At this time, do we have any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir, Mr. Faulkner.
I'd like to continue my comments in opposition to the motion. And before I continue, let me state that I believe that the comments that I'm about to make about Eastbrook of Creekmore are absolutely relevant to this case because, as I said a few minutes ago on page 12 of the staff report, staff is using Eastbrook at Creekmore as a precedent to justify the requirements reductions in Saddlebrook and Sanderah. I will continue. The first final plat for Eastbrook was on the consent agenda for our June 16, 2020 meeting, but the reduction in requirements was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission on November 19, 2019 in case 19024. In this case, the property was modified from two-family residential to single-family residential, which I'm sure seemed more desirable to the commissioners. If I had known that it was going to set a precedent for developments I feel are undesirable in other parts of the city, obviously Sanderah and Saddlebrook, I would have voted against the Eastbrook. obviously Sinderah and Saddle Brook, I would have voted against the Eastbrook case. Finally, there are several details in the preliminary plat for Sinderah that I object to. Both of the cul-de-sacs in the northeast area exceed the 600-foot maximum length specified in 445.030I9A. Niagara Falls Trails is approximately 825 feet long. Manitou Springs Trail is approximately 675 feet. This code requirement exists to promote safety in emergency conditions. And I don't see any conditions here that would justify an exception. Cul-de-sac length is also one reason I voted against the preliminary plat for Saddle Brook. The situation is even worse in these two proposed subdivisions because the lot size reduction means more houses on these cul-de-sacs than would be in a standard R1. My other objection to these two cul-de-sacs is that stormwater best management practices are not shown on the plats, just these two cul-de-sacs. I didn't see anything to the contrary stated in the MOU. And staff comments at the top of page 14, item number 14, state that teardrop design was incorporated on most cul-de-sacs. It doesn't say all. City code 445.030I9C does not allow exceptions. It uses the words "shall be required." In closing, I don't understand why these high-density, single-family developments are being promoted in Raymore. I don't see how they benefit existing residents. And I feel that they are destroying the character of Raymore that brought us here and has kept us here. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Faulkner. Mr. Zer, in the middle of a motion and discussion, if there are any questions regarding development standards, is it appropriate to continue that discussion with responses from staff? What's the?
As presiding officer, you can recognize anyone in the room for purposes of making comment and responding.
Okay, very good. I know we kind of talked about the cul-de-sacs to a certain degree, previous preliminary plat standards. The distance, I do agree, I mean, looking at this, these are thousand-plus-foot streets. So, Mr. Crass, if you have anything, because previously we talked about 600-foot being maximum or thereabouts.
I would, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would simply point out that there is a provision to allow longer cul-de-sacs in the code. That there, yes, it says that. But there is also that the planning commission can waive that with the city engineer's recommendation. My recommendation stands. This length of cul-de-sac exists in numerous areas around the city due to various reasons, whether it's backing up to a stream. In this case, it's backing up to a limited access roadway. With regard to the stormwater quality, stormwater quality is never shown on the preliminary plat. It is part of the final plat stormwater calculations and a detailed stormwater report is prepared as part of the infrastructure. The facilities are not necessarily shown on the preliminary plat. They are, and as I said, they are, is part of the final infrastructure.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments or discussion based on the motion on the table? Okay, seeing none, let me put this away real quick. Okay. All right, so all those in favor of accepting the rezoning and sending to council as previously was mentioned, please raise your hand. All those opposed? And there's no abstentions. So that would pass five to four. At this time, I would give the opportunity, I always fail to do this, so I want to make sure I get this right tonight. For any members that voted in the negative, if you have, I offer you the floor to be able to state your reasons. But at the same time, no comment is required.
No comment. I've already stated why.
Very good. I assume you're?
Yes, I think I've already stated my reasons for opposition.
Very good, thank you, sir. Mr. Chair, do you have anything to say here?
Not really. I'm just, I mean, I think the project is, I'm all for the subdivision. I just feel a little uncomfortable with that many small lots. That's really it.
And I echo those sentiments. You know, I definitely don't want Raymore to continue down that path. Obviously, we can control that to a certain degree. I think this is going to be a wildly successful development and neighborhood, and I want nothing but the best for it. You know, I do live in Creekmore, so I do see, every time I'm on hole 12, I do see those clover and hive houses. And I do have a little second guessing every once in a while, but that's obviously in the past. So I do believe, you know, I drive up and down through parts of Lee Summit and I see how well Summit Homes builds some of these projects that they have, like on the west side of Pryor Road, south of Chipman. And they're very high and very nice. So I know they'll do a great job and I wish them nothing but luck. And with that, we will move into our city council report. Mr. Zer.
Thank you, Chairman. This evening, as far as the city council report since your last meeting, there's been one city council meeting. It occurred on July 12, 2021. During the course of that city council meeting, of particular note, and I think Mr. Catterett previously advised the commission of this during the course of the staff report on the last case, was the Saddle Brook rezoning in the Saddle Brook preliminary plat. Saddle Brook rezoning, following a public hearing and an opportunity for individuals to be involved, passed by a vote of seven to one, thereby overturning the recommendation provided by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Thereafter, the Saddle Brook preliminary plat was postponed. That was the first reading for the Saddle Brook rezoning. And the postponement was put in place for purposes of being able to allow for its consideration after the second reading of the Saddle Brook rezoning. Beyond that, there was a replat of the Brookside 10th, Track V and Track W, which received unanimous approval of the city council following Planning and Zoning Commission's approval of it or recommendation for approval on July 6, 2021. That would conclude staff, oh, I'm sorry. Let me also make sure and point out, the city council did have the opportunity of choosing a new mayor pro temp. In that time, the council voted to provide for Councilman Townsend to serve as mayor pro temp for another term. And again, I think that would conclude my analysis and review of the city council meeting. As always, Mr. Catterett, Mr. Crass, and Mayor Turnbull were all present during that. And I would invite them to provide any additional that I may have missed.
Very good, thank you so much. And do we have a staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Looking at our calendar, I would like to request the commission cancel your August 3 meeting. We had the deferral of the annual review of the UDC tentatively scheduled. We would have to push that to a later meeting. There is a schedule conflict that evening. So if we can't, we don't have any applications to consider. So we would like to cancel the August 3 meeting. But we do have two applications for your August 17 meeting. So we will be meeting, and one of them is a public hearing. So we will be meeting on August 17. That concludes staff report.
Thank you. So just reiterate, August 3 will be canceled and we will have one on the 17th, which will include a public hearing, correct? Wonderful, thank you, sir. Any other staff reports? Mr. Crass, thank you. At this time, we will have our public comment section. Most of our public has left. So if any of you out in the hallway would wish to come back in and speak, we would welcome that at this time. Seeing none, we will move on to our commission member comments. And I will start on my left here with Vice Chair Pfizer.
Well, thanks to staff for keeping us informed of everything and doing a great job as always. I'd like to mention that this Saturday is Raymore Summer Scene Festival at TB Hannah Park from 5:00 to 10:00. There will be entertainment and art and music and food. And you should all go and see it. It'll be a great time, I promise.
Thank you. Commissioner Faulkner, I tricked you. You thought I, I said I started on my left. I wasn't going to continue on my left. Commissioner Faulkner, I was looking at my paper. I write with my left hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I realize that I said quite a bit. I certainly do have more thoughts on the matter and I was trying to keep it a little bit tight just so that I didn't lose your attention. For the record, I don't appreciate being censored. And that's all I'll say this evening.
Now, Commissioner Inger, sir.
Thank you, that's all I have to say after all that. But no, I appreciate your efforts. I always am pleased when I get the package on Friday and I can spend some time Friday and over the weekend reviewing everything. And then I have in my mind what I think is going to happen. And then to see it play out is very interesting. But thank you for putting me in a position where I can be prepared.
Commissioner Mansour?
Thank you, staff, for all your hard work.
Commissioner Akia?
You know, as always, I appreciate the staff and everything you do. You know, I came out in support of this project mainly because, you know, the trends I'm seeing in housing, the trends I'm seeing in community development, the affordability of homes is becoming a harder and harder thing to accomplish in today's economic environment. And I'm a firm believer in allowing people to decide what size lot they want to live in. When you kind of made your comment about golfing and the size, the thought I have is, they're there and are they necessarily as big as I would want? No, but obviously there's a demand because I don't think there's very many vacant homes in Creekmore. So, you know, kind of letting the demand dictate the size of the lots. And while I understand Raymore, you know, parts of Raymore do have that larger lot feel, you know, as we grow and develop, I know we need to have a little more variety as well. And so I'm excited to see those opportunities come to fruition and to kind of see the designs that we're getting, I think are pretty phenomenal. So again, thank you for everything you guys do.
Secretary Peterman?
Thanks, staff. It's interesting to participate in growing pains of Raymore, whether it's small or big, whatever its houses. Interesting to go through the process and they all end up being a little different. But it's always interesting and I appreciate what everybody else does. Good job, Mr. Wiggins, tonight. You're making us feel that you're a good leader.
Thank you, I very much appreciate that. Mayor Turnbull, sir.
Yeah, I wasn't going to make any comments, but since I've been called out here about censorship, I would remind Mr. Faulkner that his comments were all part of the record. Nothing was censored from that. It was just out of order. That was my only point, sir. I too, like Mr. Akia, feel like a variety of housing options is important for our community. These are wildly popular in other areas of our metropolitan area, including two very high-end-standing communities of Lee Summit and Overland Park. I don't think it denigrates the city of Raymore at all to have this option available. And I appreciate the staff's work in really going through all of these proposals and ensuring that what they do bring to us has your seal of approval because you know what our growth plan is. You've listened to the council, you've listened to other citizens, you've listened to developers. And you always bring us a quality product and I appreciate that. That's all I have, sir.
Commissioner Bowie?
Yeah, I'd like to echo the mayor's warm extension to you guys. And I appreciate it, all the work and hard work you guys put on. And if I disagree with anything, it's nothing personal. It's just, I still respect the findings of facts and things that you guys bring before. It's because I know it's tedious and you guys have the best interest of the city in mind as well. You know, as commissioners, we have some other things to think about. You know, we represent a ward and in that ward, there's other people besides us. And so we have to think about those folks and how they are looking at it as well, although we're a little more informed. But, so I appreciate you guys and thank you guys for all the hard work you do.
Kind of echo some similar comments. Even though I voted against it purely just based on the lot sizes, you know, I'm not expecting 60 to 80-foot lot sizes in the entire neighborhood or the entire city. We do, we clearly have a need for housing that is not as expensive as some of the developments that are going to be going in. The fact that some of these houses in this neighborhood are going to reach almost three-quarters of a million dollars. I imagine there are probably a lot of people that 10 years ago in Raymore thought that there would never be a subdivision that had houses that were that expensive. Obviously, there's plenty of people with big homes on land, but that's a different set. So, you know, I'm glad this, you know, that this developer is behind this. It'll be a high-quality one. I just wish the lots were a little bit bigger, even five feet. You know, I don't like that we're kind of rewriting the standard again and again to make things smaller and smaller. But, you know, obviously, we need to be fluid in moving the direction that the market dictates. And like Commissioner Akia said, you know, just because one of us might not buy one of those houses doesn't mean that, you know, somebody else in this community isn't wanting to move into Raymore and move into a $300,000 house, which is still a lot for a small house. But there aren't a lot of affordable homes anymore. And everything that we can do to make this a community of all ages and a community that is welcoming of a lot of people, you know, obviously, that's probably in the back of the mind or at the front of the mind of staff. So thank you, everybody, for your comments and your time tonight. Staff, thank you as always for everything that you do. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. A motion by Commissioner Akia, second by Mayor Turnbull to adjourn tonight's meeting. All in favor? Seeing all hands, we are adjourned. Thank you, have a good night.